Welcome to our regular monthly meeting of the Saint Craig Central Board of Education Meeting. It's the date December tenth, and it's at seven oh three. So we call the meeting to order. Everybody will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I have a roll call of members. I have Mr. Lixet, Mr. Hugh, myself, Mr. DeGros, and Mr. Olson present. Mrs. Rogers and Mr. Redmond were unable to make it tonight. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
Okay. This time we have an opportunity for public comment. Do we have anybody here for comments to the board? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our highlight and new, which is our holiday performance by our SCC Elementary School Music Students. Welcome.
So these guys are third graders, and last week they performed a show called The Unity Tree, where we had some dogs and some cats, and they were fighting like cats and dogs. And then they came around and decided that, what's the name of the song?
I'd Rather Not Be Your Friend.
I'd Rather Be Your Friend. So they're going to sing one of their songs, and it's called I'd Rather Be Your Friend. Sit right here.
Don't want to be your enemy. Would you rather get along, sharing our unity?
Uh-oh. Don't know why that happened.
It can't lie. Relax, John.
I'd rather not be mad. Don't want to feel so angry. Wouldn't you rather get along, than we could all be friends? Free from war and free from hate. This is our chest and last. We don't have to be what we don't want to be. We can let go of the past, of the past. I'd rather be your friend. Don't want to be so angry. Wouldn't you rather do different things, sharing our unity? I'd rather be... I'd rather be your friend.
Thank you very much. Board, we truly appreciate the performances by the students. Yeah, if we could have all the students introduce themselves, and when we come forward, we have a little treat for them.
Ellen Peterson.
Paul Sika.
Alan Peterson.
Morgan Nelson.
Duncan Chrisa.
Come on up.
Probably enough for another one for each of you.
Good job.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome job.
Board, I always appreciate these moments, and it makes us proud to see these students performing at this level and have the courage to come up and stand up in front of a massive unknown adult sometime. Gelted out, so thank you very much.
Now you all go home and do your extra work at home?
We're just gonna watch the Vikings lose.
There you go.
The party shot.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Newby.
Okay. Another wonderful performance. I always appreciate that. At this time, we'll move on. I don't believe we got opportunity for comments from board members and superintendent. Have we got any board members' comments?
I wanna go home and watch the Vikings lose.
Can't we all just be friends?
Can't we all just get along?
Yeah, we could all watch.
What are you really doing?
I'm with you.
I ain't gonna repeat, I'm with you.
Thanks, John.
Did you just hear what the song was about?
Yeah.
I'd be your friend.
It was about cats and dogs, huh?
Oh, not people.
Bears and Packers and Vikings.
Unity in the back world has to be lost.
That one?
I wore a Vikings jersey, and then I broke up a rash for two years.
Okay.
Sorry, Howard, I kind of took that off track there.
Okay, if no one has comments, then you have anything, Tim?
No, I don't.
Then we will move on. Don't have any scheduled presentations that I'm aware of at this time, so we'll go into the financial reports.
Bank account balances as of November thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Citizens Bank checking, one hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twelve cents. Citizens Money Market, six thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars twenty-six cents. Citizens Money Market Fund forty-six, fifty-one dollars fifty-three-two cents. Citizens Money Market Suicide Revenge Fund, seventeen thousand five hundred four dollars eighty-two cents. American Deposit Management Referendum Proceeds, one hundred ninety-five thousand twenty-seven dollars twenty cents. For total bank account balances of four hundred and five thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented?
Second.
And a motion, Kirk, second, David, to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any discussion?
I was just wondering, Tim or Jen, we had the two negative numbers further up in the back, the balance sheet for cash balances. You know if that's related to, is that just timing?
Yeah, we're doing for, have we received it?
Have we received the?
Yes, yeah. Put all the payrolls in that right away, you know.
Okay, so that's just, it's that one day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the next item, which is consideration of the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the meeting minutes for the November nineteenth Wage and Benefit Committee meeting, the November nineteenth board meeting minutes, approval of the bi-monthly bills for December two thousand eighteen, approval of resignations and retirement. Laura Rosaboom, full-time middle school special ed teacher, approval of appointments and contract modifications. Mitch Klimick, Panther Productions Coordinator, Becky Dillon as the interim dance coach for two thousand eighteen nineteen, Melanie Kofel, interim assistant dance coach for two thousand eighteen nineteen, John Tackman as the halftime winter strength and conditioning coordinator, Ryan Berg as halftime winter strength and conditioning coordinator, Chance Legness as halftime summer school director, Lindsay Jacobs as halftime summer school director, and approval of curriculum modification request for students to enroll in full-time and/or part-time virtual ed courses for two thousand eighteen nineteen, which are five part-time and one full-time student. Whoever motion? To accept as presented? Motion, David?
Second.
Second, John, who the consent agenda is presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We got summer school directors, two years old.
I think we're so wait for some days, just give it, give it some wait time here, Howard.
Okay, then we'll move on to administrative reports. Okay. Do we have any? No? Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to our key work for our school board, which consists of our student staff and community recognition.
Recognizations from the board for the month of December include, to Amy Olson, thank you, Amy, for leading the duct tape challenge for our students and community. The lessons learned in your leadership were never, will never be forgotten. How was that?
Wow.
Shelley and Lindsay, how was the duct tape challenge?
It hasn't, oh, the tape.
Have you been duct taped yet?
By seventy-seven dollars, we have to be duct taped, both of us, plus a first grade teacher.
I think the board collected eighty dollars.
One hundred and fifty dollars came from this tape.
Oh, wow. Okay.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So December twentieth, if anyone is around and you wanna come and see us take them off.
Okay.
What day are they taking you down?
December twentieth.
Oh, I'm already taking you down.
It's that, or we have to stay over great.
Howard, you lost control of your meeting. Thank you to Sean O'Keefe. Thank you for improving the function and aesthetics of our baseball and softball fields located at the elementary school as part of your Eagle Scout project. Recognition to Cassie Cable, your patience and unconditional acceptance for your students with significant emotional and behavioral needs are recognized and appreciated. Thank you for your dedication to meeting students' needs. A thank you to Amanda Arnold and her team. Thank you for your professionalism, dedication, and excellence in the direction of All Shook Up. You've made our school and community very proud. Excuse me. Recognition to Alyssa Fritsch and David Lindsmeyer. We would like to recognize you and your work on this year's Veteran's Day program. It was another amazing tribute to the veterans. Thank you. Also to Heather Stofa and Catherine Oakland at the middle school, recognizing your work on the this year's Veteran's Day program was another amazing tribute to the veterans. And also to Jess Wolf at the high school, your leadership to create a well-organized, meaningful, and classy Veteran's Day program is very much appreciated. Unveiling the new tribute to the troops made it even more special. Thank you. Recognition to Sam Malachek. Sam is a senior at the high school this year. For creating a beautiful mural honoring our country's military history, your ability to incorporate so many moments in history is inspiring and will honor our troops for years to come. Thank you. If you haven't seen it, it's up by the cafeteria, no, up by the library wall. It's, it's just absolutely amazing if you haven't seen it. And then to Sean Conway in recognition, thank you for leading the pit band for All Shook Up. The music was fantastic and certainly adds a great deal of professionalism to the show. So those are the board recognitions for the month of December holiday.
Thank you all for submitting those, and I thank you to those who receive recognition for their dedication, hard work.
All right, Howard, this is a note for January. We have all the fall athletics wrapped up now, and so all the winners from conference, regional, and state have been announced.
Okay.
And so I think, Kirk, if we could work with either you or Jason, I know that we in the past, as the board, have recognized our outstanding students and those accomplishments.
Okay. Individuals or?
Individuals, well, individuals and teams. So, for example, like Austin Copaz, for example, has state honors, Ryan Larson. So those individuals, we've written letters to, so for example, for Abby, but then also to this, the teams, we've already, I think, done, to the teams for their sectional accomplishments or.
Just double check, make sure.
Conference, but let's just make sure, because I know we, as a board, have recognized individuals and teams for that in the past.
Academical state as well?
Pardon me?
You want academical state as well?
Yes, yeah, all those.
We'll get a comprehensive list.
Yeah, so conference, regional, and state honors, team and individuals, and then we'll, I'll help sort it out so that Pam, we're not writing, we'll write the right number.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, John. Thanks for getting after it, if I were. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to the next item, which is our annual notice to the board of the automatic rollover provision of the administrative contracts for two thousand nineteen twenty.
Yep, I'd just like to give the annual December notice that each administrator will receive a one-year contract extension on their current contracts unless the board notifies administrator in writing prior to January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, of its intent not to do so.
Okay, so all members of the board are aware of that. Something we've done for years, so. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of the two thousand nineteen twenty school calendar.
All right, everyone should have a copy as exhibit thirteen A, and also a summary of the next page as well, thirteen B, I believe it is. Thirteen A, thirteen A summary. So just to kind of the highlights, calendar is very similar with one, I would say, major difference, in that we would like to start school on Thursday, August twenty-ninth. I advertise that as the first day of school for everybody, business as usual, take care of the housekeeping stuff up front, and get started two days earlier. Technically, it is summer school, because we're still not allowed to start until after September first, but we would like to advertise it like most districts do now. They've taken advantage of getting a little early start, so they can really get the ground running on Tuesday, September third. So we just advertise it as regular school, however, it is summer school, August twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And Jen has run the costs and included it as an exhibit here for you. So between, we would have to pay an extra two days for support staff, cooks, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, most secretaries, et cetera. Other folks like custodians, some office staff, et cetera, would be, housekeepers working anyway. So Jen did all that math for an actual cost, and, but twenty thousand dollars. It was, it was just under twenty, and she's hadn't run FICA yet, so she estimates twenty thousand dollars for an expenditure. But in revenue, if you take our current enrollment, as it sits third Friday in September, and add that up and run it through the summer school formula, then we get, which, then we get forty-eight thousand six hundred minutes divided by FTE is eighteen FTE, and then you take forty percent only, so seven, so seven times nine thousand five hundred eleven, sixty-six, five seventy-seven. So in addition to getting an early start, we also would be some financial boon and forty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, an extra FTE summer school revenue.
You should run summer school more often.
Yeah. The PD days, the open houses, everything else, like in August, is still the same. We're shooting for, trying to do one PD day per month for teachers. We spread out on five again for all staff. So you can see in the summary, five PD for all staff. Cutting it down to five and a half, teacher. And in addition to that, so we are losing two PD days in trade-off for the two extra summer school teaching days. So same number of student days and one seventy-two, one hundred and ninety teacher contract days. So we don't count those as student days. We still have one hundred and seventy-two after September first. We do count them as teacher required work days.
Any pitfalls or drawbacks staffing-wise, or any anticipated groups that might block at, at starting on those days, or have any concerns about it?
Not that we're aware of. We haven't rolled this out to staff, because this is the first time we're just presenting it to the board, and then we typically present it to the staff.
What's your concern? Labor day weekend?
Well, nothing, nothing specific, just change is difficult for a lot of people, and if you're asking them to do something that is not routine, we just have to know that it's not an issue with the kitchen or whoever, bus driver, in my interest.
And most of them are back that week already with professional development days and prepping up, and so that's a second week, a pretty active week, but a week that most are coming back at least.
But anything that, if you push it two days earlier, it's two days sooner that you have to be ready for day one.
Right.
You know, that's, that's not even really a concern, just wondering if it's been, you know, how it's going to be rolled out, what, that we should anticipate that there might be some concerns.
From a staff standpoint, it's very similar in that we, we have a teacher work day, then we have open house, and we got a PD day, and then a week later, we're starting with the first day of school. And then we still are able to get out the first week of June, still keep a nice long spring break in the end of March. Yeah, staying away from the third Friday count, homecoming, and I think we've taken everything into account, working on this for eight weeks.
Howard, the only question I had on it was at spring break, there's the end of the third quarter, was it like the thirty-first or something? And there's the spring break, so it's like, to me, the quarter really ends Thursday before spring break, and then those two days, like the thirtieth and thirty-first.
I'm glad you asked. Kirk, would you like to answer that, or? Well, I, I simply, I think that the quarters really aren't gonna, there's not much of a factor there anymore, at least at the high school. The end of the quarter, we just put that in there as a marker, so maybe going back to remind us that we need to communicate with parents, well, that process is changing. So the quarter really, it's not any more significant than the other time.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, probably the only reason we have it is because the WIAs asks for quarter grades for eligibility. Really, it's a midterm grade, and semester grades are the ones that.
The, the bunch that's transferred.
And every day, every day should be an informative day in terms of grading, with standards, basis.
And I understand that. I was just looking at, I just wanted to make sure that, like, we were going to spring break, and kids are coming back to two days testing.
Finals are, yeah.
Right, and so they can be informative days, because it might be moving to the next part of the work.
Right.
And, but the, for the, if there's quarter end or midterm assessments, those would be happening prior to that break, that we're not sending people out on spring break with coming back to a quarter final on Monday, Tuesday.
That's, that's true. And the other thing is the process of reassessing and looking at standards more than once, more than twice, more than three times, just continues along that process.
Okay.
The other thing that, I don't know if we even talked to the board about, we started to look to follow the lead of the elementary, middle school, and look at trimesters as well. So, you know, I mean, that's another thing we're looking at, but really, the quarter grades, it's just another step in the process, but it's not a critical date like it was in the past.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the calendar, then? Okay, do we need a formal motion to accept it at this point, or just a work in progress yet?
We typically have just presented it in December, and then asked for formal approval in January.
Okay. Well, is there any other discussion on the calendar? Okay.
What's the gut feel on the attendance rate? I would guess more towards the high school on that Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Do we lose a lot of kids that week? They not really? No.
No.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the consideration of the two thousand nineteen summer school calendar.
And it's, it's exhibit there, I mean, it's very similar, right? It's not. No? Well, I guess, I guess. I think two years ago, we had come here and talked about the difference between four, four-day weeks or three, five-day weeks. With the way the calendar fell this year, us going till June seventh, that kind of, that question was answered for us, as there's only three weeks left in June, as it is. So to keep as many days as possible, it still matches the last year in terms of student contact days, there's still fifteen of them. Unfortunately, we lose the one staff day that we had provided for the teachers this year, but there's still fifteen student days. Times are the same, swim lessons are pushed back a little bit, but for the most part, those are the same, August is the same. That's just the one big change in June.
Okay, so last day of, last day of school then is the seventh, and then come back on Monday, summer school.
Yeah. And looking long-term, I think that's on the other calendar. It will be the same in twenty twenty, just because of the way the weeks fall. Yep, we'll still have the three weeks in June, since school will end on June fourth in twenty twenty. We are able to, if teachers would like to do it, and it was optional this year even, to come in a day and have some teacher classroom time.
Okay.
So it'll look like that for two years at least.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the summer school calendar? Just present it. I guess I'm, we'll bring it back for approval on a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration and second reading of Board Policy four fifty-eight of School Wellness, Nutrition, and Physical Activity. Should be exhibit thirteen C and thirteen C checklist. Okay, the only addition we had in the previous reading was the addition of item six under Nutritional Education Goals, not to sell soda during regular school hours. Believe everything else remained the same.
Pop either, right? Change the pop?
Soda pop.
Soda or pop? Some people, right?
Howard, I just had one question on the checklist. I don't remember who the school food authorities are, and it also said, very required language in their LWPs that relate to the content areas listed, so I don't know what an LWP is.
Police policy. It's the one on page three.
Are you kidding me?
And it says it, it says it in the green.
It does. Well, then I didn't read. But who are our school food authorities?
Folks that are in charge regarding food service.
So is it truly just Tammy?
I mean, that's a, that's a good question.
All right, is it Courtney Hawkins, because she teaches food classes? Is it? I read last night at two AM, I was in insomniacs, I thought I did that. I read last night at two AM, I was in insomniacs, I thought I'd do this, but I did. Don't read for sentences.
Where is that job?
Second, second line from the bottom, says, uh, to be compliant with the final rule. Us, school food authorities are required to have language in their local wellness policy. We know that from the acronym up above. That relates to all the content areas listed below.
Second line.
Right here.
Checklist.
They're SFAs.
There it is.
And then they list, they list the people, stakeholders. Development on page three.
But it says classroom teacher, yeah, but it doesn't specify.
But your point is well taken, John, is that they don't list who this food, uh, school order, food authority is.
This, I, I guess I should correct, this isn't a policy. This was a tool that they just included to help, thought that would be helpful to the board, to make sure all was included. So this isn't part of the policy.
DPI.
This is DPI's checklist to make the policy. So right here, our policy ends up here.
Okay, so.
This is a part of the policy, I, I should have clarified.
Yeah, but I'm looking at, uh.
So DPI came in here today and said, we're gonna inspect your policy on your local wellness. And we'd like to know who this public involvement committee is. And they say, who's your administrator, classroom teacher, FIA teacher, SFA, do we know who those are for our district?
Our wellness committee, Scott is a member of.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it, that's, that's what I was curious about. I'll, I'll work on asking better questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the policy? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So move.
Policy four fifty eight.
Second.
Okay, a motion, John. Second, Scott. Approve the policy as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the next policy, this first reading of policy three forty six. Or three forty three point six on the high school coursework taken in middle school. So, I know this was, I think the, the original adoption of this. It's a few years ago that, uh, trying to allow students to take. Some more advanced math classes in middle school, to be able to take additional classes without having to double up in high school. But they don't have, they didn't have to worry about necessarily reflecting on their transcripts in high school at that point. So, I don't know if this is to clarify some of the, some of the stuff or update what we had.
It, it's to update, um, and also we have had a growth in options that kids can take in terms of online courses or Wisconsin Virtual School. Or, whatever, I know we have, I think, a seventh grader girl, maybe eighth grader, who comes up and takes upper level math already. And from what I understand from these gentlemen, it's gonna be more of those kids, um, which is great. Um, so we felt like we needed to update this. Particularly whether we'll appear on the transcript, will account towards GPA. Um, will they be able to retake the course to, to replace? If they take the risk to take algebra one in eighth grade and they don't do as well as they'd like, can they replace it? The answer to that is yes. Um, so it's, it's been updated and upgraded. We, um, on the core content courses is really what it's focused on. There's some requirements there that, one of the concerns our math teachers, for example, had was if student does really well in math. But it's not their passion and they're able to meet their graduation requirements before their, by the end of their sophomore year and they're done taking math. They don't wanna take it anymore. That's gonna hurt them, but it's also gonna hurt us on our, on our performance on ACT. So we want to encourage them to keep going. So caveat there, for example, under core content courses, math. They need to take three years or six semesters of math while they're in grades nine through twelve. And likely, those brightest kids will be, end up taking some courses through EWRF, for example, or something like that as well. And then we just extended that to English Science and Social Studies.
Okay. I guess a couple of questions I would have would be as far as science and math. Or what are the state requirements at this time?
Three and, three credits each, so three full years.
I know there are some school districts that have upped that to four. Is that something that we've considered?
We haven't, I personally have, but we haven't talked about it.
Okay. That would, that would be a long discussion, I'm sure. Cause it would be a change, significant change, so.
The, is this only for classes taken at the high school or at the high school level? Or what about like the eighth grade algebra one? So do we need anything in the policy about licensure?
Yeah, there's a.
Was there?
There's a spot in here, um, I don't, um, if it doesn't appear before this, I need to make sure it does. But, uh, it needs to be a, a teacher with a high school certification, and it doesn't appear down until online coursework, and it needs to appear sooner. If it doesn't already, so I can make sure that's added in there.
Okay, I see it there, but I didn't see it higher.
I don't see it higher either.
And that, that's required for math and science or any of those?
Any of them.
Okay.
So that's same courses taken at the high school, middle school, um, or through. Courses may be taken with, yeah, so you wanted to say that there is a certified instructor.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost like that, that online coursework, you could, the, the sentence that matters to online coursework. Is other options will be accepted as deemed appropriate by the school administration. And then I think there's something that is all encompassing about licensure. Courses may be taken at the high school, middle school, or through the Wisconsin with a high school certified instructor. Right, just, it's its own topic around.
Right.
S- certified to teach the classes.
Yeah.
Online option, you just leave it, you know, if you wanna bring us, you know, dark matter astronomy. As a seventh grader and you want to take it online, it's a high school class, you gotta just get the approvals.
So take that out, maybe, um, the first sentence there and put it right at the very top.
First sentence where?
Courses maybe taken at the high school, middle school, or through Wisconsin.
Yeah, that's almost your leading statement somewhere.
At the top, almost.
The key, well, we were really aiming at there was that we're not gonna accept Odyssey where as a, uh, legitimate online course. It does not have the rigor required, whereas Wisconsin Virtual School does have the rigor.
I see, so maybe keep it.
Yeah, but, but it needs, obviously needs to be added up. Yeah, I think we just kinda mushed it together and it needs to be different. The id- the idea of this is to open up doors for the middle school kids and whoever else.
And then does that help us with our gifted and talented, um, direction too, or not necessarily?
I think it does at the front end, at the hi- at the t- upper end of the high school, those kids are going to River Falls to take classes, they're doing other things.
Right.
Yeah, I think naturally.
But it opens it up at that middle school.
For sure.
The examples that Kurt referred to are, they are GT kids.
Yeah.
That are doing those classes already.
Yeah, cause I, uh, as I remember it, there was always the crunch. Where they gotta take algebra one in middle school, and they gotta take algebra two as freshmen, and then they had to double up on geometry and trig. To get into pre calc.
So you could get both your calcs in.
We, yeah, we have a number of kids that do geometry and ALG, uh, together right away.
Yeah, some, some of them do, but, you know, we're trying to.
Yep.
Stretch it out to those that didn't want, who still have an opportunity to take those classes.
What, what if I just add as number five, um, transcript and credit number five, all courses will be taught by DPI certified instructor? That kind of aligns with.
I need a good section to put it in, because it's already kinda laying out the overall.
Yeah, DPI. One thirty eight, and then the guidelines are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you could just make it the number one and bump everything else down.
And I would put all courses must be.
Yeah.
Not so be, because of, that assumes that we're vetting any source that they might take a course from. If they pick it, we get to say that it's not.
Appropriate.
That it doesn't qualify.
All courses must be taught by. And then relieve the rest of them, the course will, the sign grade will, full credit will, how to current.
And I, and I think, um.
DPI certified, you have to specify high school or just want to DPI certified?
No, it should be specified as the high school instructor.
Okay.
High school certified instructor.
Even if it'd be DPI, right, and the only certification there really is.
Then I need to be clear, more clear on the number five or whatever up top, I need to make sure that I, it does count towards our overall GPA. However, if there's a, we refuse to have risk of them not wanting to take it because of the GPA impact by allowing them to.
Replace.
They can replace. So I'll, I can add it in as like a number five.
Okay, you, me and Pam.
Yep.
Can work on that together.
Yeah, but you have it under number two in that second retaking a course.
Right, I just, it did, I, it's, it might be redundant, but I think it's, if you're just looking at it, um, so if I don't retake the course. Does it count to my GPA? I don't know, it's, when I read it here earlier today, I thought that could be a spot to clarify.
Yeah. Okay. Now we're trying to get these things, so there's no confusion. Good. Okay, any other questions or comments? Then it will stand approved as the first reading. We'll bring it back at the next meeting for final approval. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is WSB State Convention. January twenty third through twenty fifth. I already reg- believe Pam's looking for final registrations, if anybody's changed their mind on that. I will be going down Monday, I got a meeting on Tuesday noon. Got, uh, round table I've gotta work at on, uh, Thursday afternoon. And I luckily, uh, get to be the delegate this year again, Wednesday afternoon, so.
I'm working that, so that next year I'll be able to go again. We're shifting some timing, but I, I cannot do it this year, I would. I would like to get back down there.
Well, I can, I can almost certify that after, uh, Wednesday's meeting, I will be ready for a dose of alcohol.
Are we still recording?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
The day will be done. You, you have to, you have to enjoy the delegate, uh, convention at least once a year, so.
No, you would not. I would love to see you in that environment, but.
So, okay, if anybody changes their mind, uh, please get to Pam, uh, before the end of this week. Uh, so we get those registrations in, otherwise, uh, we'll let the rooms that we have, uh, not committed to go. So, okay, moving on to the next item, important upcoming dates. January seventh is our next, uh, SEC Board, uh, Learning and Special Meeting, six thirty here at the district office. January twenty third through twenty fifth is the State Convention, Milwaukee. January twenty eighth is our next regularly scheduled board meeting here, seven PM at the district office. Are there any other dates? Uh, I believe we had, uh, mentioned the last time. There's a board pack meeting in CISO eleven scheduled for Monday, March, uh, twenty fifth also.
And then Pam, I have to work with you to find the date for, uh, Communications Committee.
Okay, are there any other dates that are upcoming?
Do we have a next wager benefits meeting set?
It'll be the fourteenth.
Except we're not on, on the fourteenth of this cycle.
Oh.
We're on the seventh and the twenty eighth.
Oh, yeah, I'm.
Twenty.
The seventh then.
Oh, the seventh.
Yeah.
Will that just be work session again, or?
Wait, the benefit?
Yeah.
A strategy, so.
I think.
Word and admin only?
I think so.
Yeah.
Like one more.
Okay.
Okay, can we look at the, uh, we wouldn't have one on the twenty eighth then, would we?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Or can we do communications on the twenty eighth?
It's definitely the seventh to the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we moved, we moved the date a week later because of the, yeah, convention.
So the twenty eighth, can we do six?
Two weeks in.
Six.
Okay.
So that's the reason, uh, January meeting is moved a week later was because of the convention, so.
Yeah, so can we do communications on Monday, the twenty eighth at six? So, will that work for you? Or will you have advisory committee?
Um, I can, I've been moving them up to five.
Okay, so let's do communication at six on the twenty eighth. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else, uh, that needs to come, um, before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to convene a closed session per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty five one C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or prefer performance evaluation data of. Public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. It has to do with our an- annual staff performance update, so.
So move.
Okay, I have a motion, David Olson, second, Scott DeGros, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, at this point, do we need to take a couple of minute recess, or do we just wanna go into it?
Let's just go.
Okay.